The meeting of the Hammond Common Council for June 12th, 2017 is now in session. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the invocation. Thank you.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the majority for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remove your headgear, if you have a hat on or anything. We'd like to remember in our prayers, all military members who've lost their lives in defense of our country, and bless their families, and also bless the family of Mr. Rick Gagdo, who passed away last month. He was a 4th District resident, and he had many friends here in Hammond. He will be missed. Amen.
Let me, Clerk Golick, roll call votes, please.
Markovich, here. Spitali.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Higgs.
Emerson.
Here.
Warple.
Here.
Rakels.
Here.
Vanez. Here. Let the record reflect, Councilman Higgs is here, Clerk Golick. Let the record reflect, nine present, zero absent. Moving on to reading of the minutes.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Spitali.
Your motion is accepted minutes, on May 22nd, 2017.
Exactly.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Emerson, to approve the minutes of May 22nd, 2017. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Moving on to approval of claims.
Madam Chairlady.
Yes, Councilman Markovich.
Move for approval of claims, May 17th through June 7th, 2017, for council meeting, June 12th, 2017. Beginning with claims dated 6/5/17 and ending with claims dated 6/7/17. Claim number 3229 through claim number 3578, for a total of $10,650,990.79, I so move.
Second. Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs, for approval of claims from May 17th through June 7th, 2017. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call votes, please.
Markovich, yes. Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. Let the record reflect, claims pass, nine in favor, zero opposed. Moving on to public hearings.
Item A. Ordinance 17-15, an ordinance amending and fixing the schedule of sewer rates and charges to be collected by the Hammond Sanitary District from the owners of properties served by the Sewerage Works of the District.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance number 1715, please approach the podium.
George Stoya, Robert Snell. I understand the necessity for the rates being hiked, I guess, to update, get us in compliance with all the EPA stuff. What I'm concerned about is, I keep hearing, I assume it's unintentional, maybe it isn't, that we have the lowest rates in the state. And we keep hearing that, it keeps being repeated, and what I worry about is that it's somehow, we're being conditioned in some subtle fashion into a situation where, hey, there's still room to raise the rates. And what makes Hammond somewhat, well, not somewhat, but one of the factors that makes Hammond attractive is its low sanitary district rates. And so I think there's, and I worry about that there's some sort of implicit, I'm not saying intentional, just implicit carte blanche. Hey, we've got room to raise the rates a little more, no problem, we'll still be the lowest. And it's like, just because, that's what I want, I want to keep it the lowest, and not keep using this sliding scale, and rising, and rising, and rising, so long as we're still the lowest. And so, that's my primary concern about it. I just worry that we're being conditioned subtly to, we're the lowest, and that it induces more.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance number 1715?
Yes, Jim Tofford, 633 South Street, Munster. I'd like to, there's a rumor going around that multi-unit buildings are somewhat, I guess, mooching off the sanitary system, and I like to disabuse people of that. And the way I looked at it was, I looked up the property taxes for various multi condos and apartments in Munster, and then tried to correspond that with single, what you would have if you had a single family sitting on that property instead. And, I don't know if you're familiar with Munster, there's Oakcrest Apartments on Manor Avenue there. There's about seven buildings on there, and their taxes that they would pay for this year are about $114,000. And the best I can figure, the Hammond Sanitary District is going to get about nine and a half percent of that. Last year was 10 and a half percent in Munster anyway, but it looks like it's nine and a half now. But anyway, that's almost $11,000 off of property taxes that HSD is going to get. And I, and on the back of the, on the other side of the tracks of those apartments, there's about 19 houses, and so I took four of them and got an average real estate tax, and then I came up with about $5,200. So the advantage over the single families was 108 percent if my apartments being there instead. And the auto excise tax, I think there's about 112 apartments there, so if you figure $100, you know, I'm just, you know, we're using rough figures, and HSD gets about nine and a half percent of that, that's about $1,100, as opposed to the 19 houses, which I just took as being two cars per house. So that's $361. So that's about 195 percent better on the excise tax, so that's on apartments. And there was some doubt in Munster anyway, they thought maybe, well, using apartments wasn't a really good comparison, because they have the 2 percent limit, as opposed to condos that are mostly residential. And so that piqued my interest, and so I picked, they had a 20-unit condo building and a 39-unit condo building. The one with 20 units, they are going to be paying about $20,000 a year, this year. And I took the three houses across, because I figured, three houses would be tight, but you could fit them in there. And that's, and HSD would get about $900 of that. So the, that's about 117 percent more than you're getting if there were single-family houses there, which is more than 108 percent from the single family. And then, if you do the auto, there's 24 garages at the 20-unit place, so that's about $228 for HSD, and I put seven houses on for the three houses, and so that's about $67 for that. And then the 39-unit building, the, HSD is going to get over $11,000 from them, and I picked five houses in the area there. I don't know how representative it is, but a lot of them, they're going to be paying the same amount on a per-unit basis. So that's about $1,500. So that's $11,000 compared to $1,500. So that's 646 percent better that you're going to get from a condo, that you got from a condo than from a single family, and that's been going on for decades. And so, and so that was the reason for raising our rates, 112 percent since last time, was because we were being, essentially being moochers. And, of course, we're not. The, there's some advantages to, like, I mean, multiple family, like, if you're aware of where the Oakcrest Apartments are, that's maybe roughly a two-block area. So, you've got less sewer lines that you have to monitor and take care of, maintain, whatever. You don't have as many streets to plow or salt. And you get a, you get an economics of concentration from multi-unit buildings that you don't get from single-family buildings. And one thing that's kind of concerned me, when this last rate, that went, two and a half years ago, that went up, we were changed from residential to commercial, and Munster didn't go through the BZA or Planning Commission and all that sort of stuff, so I assume that that was not proper. Okay, we're not dealing with fact here, obviously, that we are, that multifamilies are moochers. It's arbitrary and discriminatory. It would be nice, because we feel like we're kind of being, the deck is stacked against this, I mean, everything we go to is, it's, you know, rebutted and ignored and whatever. So it would be nice if, maybe if a third party, something, somebody like the IURC could mediate this stuff, and where we could feel that maybe we're getting a fair shake on this. And I should note that, at least in Munster anyway, over 10 percent of the families live in multi-unit buildings, and a lot of them are voters. And should, I want to mention that we don't mind paying whatever the rates are, but they should be fair to us. So if it's residential, then we should be paying residential. And this law that you're talking about now, I think, 1715, back in 93, 94 area, I'm not for sure what Hammond's ordinance number was, but it, Munster's is 991, that established the admin charge being applied on a per-meter basis. So if you pass a law that, where you have, a single family is based on meter, but multi-unit is based on something else, that, to me, that seems discriminatory. Okay, one last thing, the, in the paper, it was, said that HSD is the cheapest state, and I looked, I got the 2017 Annual Sewer Bill Analysis, that was January of this year, published by the IURC, and I don't know if this is apples and apples or not, but we have Country Acres Property Owners Association, they pay $6 for the processing of 5,000 gallons, and the Hessen Utilities pays $4. And then there was also, HSD said that if you took the rates times three, they were still less than anybody else, but I counted six. There was, if you take what they have on here, the 1338 times three, you'd come up with 4014, and there's at least six other sanitary districts that are less than the three. And then if you take this new rate, which would be 995 a month, you take that times three, you count, I count 28 that are still under that. So, you know, assuming that these figures haven't changed since January 13th. So I am asking, recommending that you vote down this ordinance and let the IURC handle it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance number 1715? Anyone else wishing to speak?
Mary Ellen Slazik, 517 Lewis Street. There's a lot of people in Hammond cannot afford an increase, even a few dollars, on their water bill, sanitary bill. There's a lot of people in Hammond that aren't fixed incomes, senior citizens, some disabled people, and there's a lot of lower-income people that are homeowners, they're just making ends meet. My social security check, I only got a $2 a month increase, that's nothing. And of course, this water increase, the sewer increase, will wipe that out and then some. Of course, there's been increases in other things too, like phone bills and everything else. But that's something you've got to consider. Maybe there should be something squeezed in, where people that are low income, people on a fixed income, where they can get a little bit of a break on this. Because if you're only getting, like, me, I'm getting $2 a month more, my social security check this year, thank God, there's other household members that do have income, it's going to really kill a lot of people out there. And there's a lot of people that are lower income, and they just can't take the hit. And they're homeowners, why should they be penalized? And I don't think anybody that has an apartment building should get any kind of break, I think they should pay a higher rate than any residential, because they are a business, landlords are a business. So, that's my opinion on that, but please consider the seniors that are being squeezed out from one end to the other, with all the increases and everything else, and even though this doesn't seem like a lot of money, it really is to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance number 1715? Anyone else wishing to speak? Public hearings is now closed. Moving on to communications. Any communications? I do happen to have a communication. This is addressed to Janet Vanez, President, City of Hammond Common Council, regarding attendance requested. Dear Mrs. Vanez, this response is written on my behalf and members of the Board of School Trustees. It is a response to your letter requesting the attendance of Mrs. White and me at the Hammond Common Council meeting, to provide an update and all information regarding a proposed school-city referendum. Please be advised that it is my understanding that a number of council members attended the 1028 hearing, held on May 30th, 2017, where tentative information was given on the provisions of the referendum. We will be meeting later sometime this week, with a consultant to finalize what direction the board will take relative to the referendum. After our plan is finalized, and we will move forward with what is developed, we will be happy to plan a meeting where the finalized contents are shared with the city council members. I will contact your office in the near future regarding when this proposed meeting will take place. We would like to thank you in advance for your interest in learning more about our efforts in the school system. Respectfully, Walter J. Watkins. Any other communications?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
I realize that you read the letter from Dr. Watkins, but to me, I thought he should address me, seeing that I am the councilman of the 3rd District of the City of Hammond, and it's going to affect students that attend Hammond High School. And I did attend the meeting, and I was really, really upset at the fact that they didn't have enough information to give to the general public, and the people that were in attendance on the new proposed high school. However, I think the kids do deserve to have a quality education, and a school that accommodates the needs of the students. I understand from the film that they presented, that there are a number of problems that exist in the current high school. However, to me, I feel as though the new high school needs to remain where the current one is, so.
Thank you, Council-
Just for clarity of that.
Thank you, Council-
And I think all the councilmen should have received a copy of that letter, not just-
And you will. I received it today, and I will make copies and distribute it to each of the council people. Any other communications?
Madam Chairlady.
Yes, Councilman-
In regards to the letter you received, you said you just received it today, but even though he mentioned in the fact in that letter, that there were several councilmen at that meeting, we were invited to be there, just like they were invited to be here tonight. So we went to their meeting, several councilmen, I believe Spitali, yourself, Emerson, Higgs, and myself, went to his meeting, their meeting. We invited them to come to our meeting, and they send a letter saying that just because we attended their meeting, everything's okay now. Well, really, no, because I had constituents asking me questions, how much are their taxes going to go up? And you know it, and I know it, the information that they didn't have, and what they were voting on, they didn't even know what they were voting on, because they had no project in front of them yet. And several people got up and spoke about it. And if you look within this last week, everybody talked about Hammond High, a new school, new school. This past week, there was a legal notice, and they're listing every piece of property they have, as far as a building, that they're probably wanting to do work in. They talk about a new high school, but now they're telling you, well, what about all the other buildings? Are they falling apart, or what's going on? I mean, $100,000 home, is your taxes going to go up $800? $200,000 home, $1,600? $250,000 home in Hammond, $2,000 a year, more in taxes? Just for schools? I mean, nobody knows that. They never even said that. And they put a slide presentation on it, you couldn't even read it with a magnifying glass. Although, I'll give them the disclaimer, they apologized that nobody can see anything, but they had no handout. And when it came down to a vote, there was no individual vote, it was all in favor signified by saying aye. So now they can all say, oh, I didn't vote for it, I didn't vote for it, my name's not registered. You know, they didn't even do a roll call vote on that. So, I mean, it's an open-ended thing here, but, you know, just to send a letter and not show up, I mean, they want our help, but then again, you know, we have to answer to our constituents, because our meetings are being televised, and people can go back and see it. There's no communications between the schools and the constituents. You know, Dr. Watkins was at a Realtor's breakfast, and I believe they said they had, like, they were probably the biggest employer in the city of Hammond, like, with 2,700 employees. I'd like to know how many of them employees live in Hammond. You know, they got 13,000 kids going there. Do they have 1,500 kids that don't live in Hammond, that come here because of that new state law? You can go anywhere? So we're going to build a new school for 1,500, 2,000 kids that don't even live in here, that aren't going to pay any taxes on that? That's the questions that need to be answered. If you heard on the radio yesterday, in Chicago, Chicago Public Schools are going to close four schools and build one new high school for $80 million. Now, they didn't say for how many enrollment or anything, you know, but they're going to close four high schools and make one new one in one area over there for roughly $70 to $75 million. We're talking $110 million here, just for one school, and we're not really closing any schools, supposedly? Maybe GAVIT? And then whatever they're going to do as far as making an elementary school, a kindergarten to sixth grade and so forth. So there's a lot of questions out there, but, you know, the fact that he states in his letter, you know, well, just because we attended a meeting, we didn't get up and ask any questions, other than Councilman Higgs and a few other people, we were there for information, we didn't get no information. So there's a lot to be answered for, but, you know, if you're talking $800 for a $100,000 home, I mean, I mean, it's crazy, so.
Okay. That is, communications, it's for written communications, and if you choose to make any further comments on the subject, it would be under noon, unfinished business. Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Could I make a statement about the referendums?
Yes, of course.
I really would be shocked if it's on the ballot in November. You know, I understand how people are up in arms, and I tell you, I had a meeting with School City about a month ago, and from everything they told me in that meeting a month ago, they publicly unveiled the plan, and it changed within two days, which is ridiculous, when you're talking about raising people's tax bill, and you present a plan to the public, and then you feel the backlash from that, and then all of a sudden, you retreat from everything you've told people, and you tell them, okay, this is what we're doing instead. It's in such disarray, Councilman Markovich, I don't see them going forward in November. I really don't. I'd be shocked. And they have strict deadlines that are, I think they may be actually passed deadlines with the election board, because they have to get that language approved, by, you know, locally, they get the language for the referendum approved downstate. I think they may have already missed their deadline, so, you know, I understand everybody's shock, and I agree, my house, I'm looking at a couple thousand extra dollars a year, I'm not thrilled about that either, but I'm not getting fired up about it, because, A, we've got a ton of work to do ourselves, and B, I don't think it's going to be on the ballot in November. I think it may be on the ballot in 2018. You know, maybe they redouble their efforts and come up with a new plan, and approach us in, you know, November, and try to get it on the ballot next May, I could see that happening, I just, I'd be shocked if it was on the ballot in November. So, I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. Any other communications?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
I think what was discussed at the meeting, they said they had a deadline to get all the, get this completed, so I don't know where they are, but I know one of the school board members, Mr. Janik, is here, so maybe he wants to speak on behalf of the school board.
Madam Chair. Yes, Council-
I agree, Councilman Higgs, and from what I understand, that deadline's passed. So, I'm pretty sure they missed that deadline, it was, they had some type of deadline last week, I believe, that they had to follow through on, it never happened, so. You know, this has to go through the local election board, it's got to go through the state election board, they got to do a campaign, and the voters got to approve it. And even if they got it on the ballot, and they didn't do a good job, a good enough job persuading the public that this is necessary, and if it fails, we have nothing to worry about. And I think every question and concern that's brought up is legit, and it's not our job to answer the question, it's the School City's job to answer these questions. If they put a plan to the public, it's their job to sell it to us. You know, and I think all your concerns are completely valid. And I can tell you, the plan I was told, it's already different, already. So I don't know what plan is going forward.
Madam President.
Any other communications?
Madam President, I receive the correspondence, it says-
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
Thank you. During the time of sorrow, and we learned how much our friends really mean to us, thank you so much for your kindness and sympathy, at a time when it is most deeply appreciated, the family of the Juanita Cross.
Thank you. Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications is not closed. Moving on to committee reports.
Madam Chairlady.
Councilman Markovich.
We'll be bringing out ordinance 17-15, for third and final passage.
That's from council as a whole.
Correct. Madam Chairman.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
Finance and council as a whole will be bringing out 1714.
Thank you.
Madam Chairperson.
Yes, Councilman Rakels.
Councils as a whole will be bringing out 1712 as well.
Thank you. And we have one more. Councilman Warple, 1713.
The Human Relations Committee will be bringing out ordinance 1713.
Thank you very much. And, I forgot my list of the upcoming community and crime watch meetings this evening. I apologize for that. If anyone is interested in attending a community or crime watch meeting in your neighborhood, you can visit edisoncommunitywatch.com for a list of all of the meetings. You can also visit Edison Community Watch on Facebook, and, I can't believe I did that. I apologize. So, please, come out to the meetings, find out what's going on in your neighborhood, find out how you can protect yourself from becoming a victim of a crime, because community is not just about me, it's about us. Committee report is now closed. Moving on to ordinance, third and final passage.
Ordinance number 17-12, sponsored by Councilman Rakels and Councilman Emerson, and ordinance amending ordinance 7431, known as Section 91.036 of the Hammond Municipal Code, as it pertains to bees.
Madam Chairperson.
Yes, Councilman Rakels.
Madam President, excuse me. I want to bring out the final passage, adoption of 17-12.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Rakels, second by Councilman Warple, for final passage of 1712. Any discussion?
Madam Chairperson.
Yes, Councilman Rakels.
I'd like to amend 1712 to take out Section 6 under an ordinance amending on page 2, taking out everything at number 6 and make 7 number 6.
Motion by Councilman Rakels, second by Councilman Warple, to amend- Motion by Councilman Rayco, second by Councilman, uh, Warple, to amend out item number six from ordinance number seventeen twelve. Any discussion?
Madam Chairlady.
Yes, Councilman Markovich.
Could they please state what number six is, and get it into writing for the...
Councilman Rayco.
Yes. Uh, number six says, "All colonies must be registered with the Indiana Department of Natural Resources Division, Entomology and Plant Pathology annually. The beekeeper shall complete the Indiana State Beekeepers Association classes." This no longer applies, the state of Indiana does not, uh, register, or require registering, or require, or even have Indiana Beekeepers Association classes anymore.
Okay. Any other discussion? Any other discussion on the amendment?
Madam Chairperson.
Yes, Councilman Emerson.
Yeah, I think, agreeing with Councilman Rayco, that, uh, this puts at least, uh, some guidelines on people that wanna raise bees in Hammond, because before, they weren't supposed to be doing it at all. And at least, we now have parameters of what they can do.
Okay. Any other discussion on the amendment?
Madam Chairwoman.
Yes, Councilman Calwinski.
As I mentioned in caucus, uh, only one other town or city has an ordinance in Lake County, I believe, and the one that does listed that, uh, the nearest resident would be no less than two hundred feet away from the residents with the, uh, the bees. That's just for information, and for anybody to consider whether they wanna make a restriction on, on, uh, that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the amendment?
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Councilman Torres.
Yeah, because of that, there's no restriction to the property line. I understand there are a few bee hive owners in the city of Hammond, and I'm sure most of them are responsible, but there are some that are not, can be irresponsible. And because of the fact, of that fact, uh, there's no restriction of how far it can be from a property line. I know I wouldn't like, uh, bee owner to be next to my property, 'cause there are people that are terrified of, uh, bees, and, and some people are allergic to it, to them, Even though I agree, there should be some kinda ordinance in the city restricting the keeping of bees, uh, for those reasons, I won't be able to support this ordinance at this time. It's vague on that, I believe. Thank you.
Madam President.
Any other discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
It amazes me that there is so much discussion about bees, and no one had anything to say in regards to losing a court in our city. I mean, bees are one thing, but to lose a court in the city of Hammond is just amazing. I, it just amazes me that all this conversation is about bees, when something of so, so much of importance to our city, such as keeping our courts here, I didn't hear all this conversation. It just, I'm, I'm kinda lost.
I don't know what meeting you were at, Councilman, but I thought there was...
Madam Chairwoman.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
Call for the vote on the amendment.
Thank you. Clerk Golick, roll call vote, to, uh, remove item number six on ordinance number seventeen twelve.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rayco.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. Amendment passes, nine in favor, zero opposed. Now for seventeen twelve as written, any discussion?
Madam Chairlady.
Councilman Markovich.
I have a little bit of confusion here, because at the caucus, a new one was passed out, and on page two, item number six, which says, "Nothing in this ordinance shall prohibit members of Beekeepers Association from entering the city to remove hives or swarms." So, I'm just wondering if the new thing that was passed out at caucus, is this gonna be like a twelve, seventeen twelve A amendment, then? Because I don't have a copy of the original, where we just took out that item number six.
Madam Chairperson.
Yes, Councilman Rayco.
Madam President, I'm sorry. Um, I, I had our secretary make new copies of the ordinance, as it would state without number six, and then I assumed everybody would have the twelve, seventeen dash twelve from last time. I read, that's why I read number six, what was in there, the original number six. So, now, everybody has a copy of it, as amended.
So, the one you passed out, it's, that's like seventeen twelve A, and that's what we're voting on then, correct?
No, that's seventeen twelve with six taken out, the original one.
Madam Chairwoman.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
I guess to answer your question, Councilman, we're not amending the entire ordinance. He passed out twelve, and all it was missed, because this, like, you didn't have the ordinance with you, he just passed out twelve with line six missing as, uh, we're not voting on a new ordinance. We're still voting on seventeen twelve as amended, right?
Yes. Okay, any other discussion on seventeen twelve as amended? Any other discussion? Any other discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
I guess my question would be, by amending this, what is actually being taken out of the ordinance, so the general public has a clarity as to what's being changed?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
The original seventeen dash twelve, number six, which somebody asked me to read out loud, and I did, the one that said, "All colonies must be registered with the Indiana Department of Natural Resources Division of Entomology and Plant Pathology annually, and the beekeepers shall complete Indiana State Beekeepers Association classes." That was what I, what the amendment was to remove that number.
And make seven.
And that automatically moved seven up to six.
And we voted on removing number six.
So, this is actually very...
And a task nine, zero. You voted for it, Councilman Markovich. Alrighty. Uh, seventeen twelve as amended, any other discussion? Any other discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
Yes, I did vote it, but you said, uh, Councilman Markovich, my name is Councilman Higgs. Yes, I did vote it.
I thought Councilman Markovich was the one who asked about item number six. Didn't he ask about item number six?
He asked about it being removed, and he was, he needed clarity as to why, but I...
And we already voted on it. Alrighty, any other discussion? Any other discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please, on seventeen twelve as amended.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Calwinski.
No.
Torres.
No.
Higgs.
No.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rayco.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. Seventeen twelve passes, uh, level four, five, six, uh, six, six in favor, three opposed. Thank you.
Ordinance seventeen dash thirteen, sponsored by Councilwoman Vanez, and ordinance amending ordinance numbers thirty-seven oh six, forty-four sixty, forty-nine twenty, and fifty-eighty-seven, also known as section thirty-four point two-three-one of the Hammond Municipal Code, pertaining to the addition of sexual orientation and gender identity to the powers and duties of the Hammond Human Relations Commission.
Madam Chairwoman.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
I move for final passage and adoption of ordinance seventeen thirteen.
Motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman Spitali, for final passage of seventeen thirteen. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs. Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rayco.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. Uh, seventeen thirteen passes, eight in favor, one absent.
Ordinance seventeen dash fourteen, sponsored by Councilwoman Vanez and Councilman Higgs, and ordinance amending ordinance number eighty-five fourteen, also known as the Hammond Zoning Ordinance, for purposes of rezoning property at sixty-six hundred Indianapolis Boulevard to Plant Unit Development District, and adopting a Plant and Unit Development District ordinance for Hammond Sportsplex Plant Unit Development District as a supplement to the zoning ordinance.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
I move for final passage of ordinance seventeen fourteen, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Warple, for final passage of seventeen fourteen. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
This is for the, uh, this particular ordinance is for the new sports complex which will be placed where Woodmar Shopping Center is, um, so, hopefully, it will attract some new businesses, because I do believe economic development is a key resource to making a city better. Um, hopefully, I'm hoping, seeing that, uh, Walmart left, and we have a vacant lot just sitting there, and now Semi seems to utilize that as a parking space, but, I'm hoping this will encourage other businesses to come in my district.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please, on seventeen fourteen.
Markovich, yes. Spitali.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rayco.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. Seventeen fourteen passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Ordinance seventeen dash fifteen, sponsored by Councilman Markovich, Spitali, and Councilwoman Vanez.
Madam Chairlady.
Yes, Councilman, uh, Markovich.
Move for final passage and adoption of seventeen dash fifteen.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs, for final passage of seventeen fifteen.
Madam Chairlady.
Yes, Councilman.
I would request suspension of the rules to allow Marty Awegos, superintendent from the Sanitary District, to approach the council. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Warple, to suspend the rules to allow Marty Wilkes to, uh, speak on the ordinance. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Point of order.
Emerson.
Point of order.
Warple.
Point of order.
Rayco.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. Yes, Councilman Higgs.
My point of order is, you should, I guess, as President, you should be asking me what's my point of order, just for clarity, so you understand.
I understand.
Uh, my, we're voting for him to speak...
To suspend the rules.
Why?
Oh, suspend the rules.
Oh, suspend the rules, okay.
Thank you.
Because I truly didn't understand why we were voting, I thought, did you get me the question was to allow him to speak?
We, we need that in order to suspend the rules, Councilman.
Fine.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, so you can add me as a yes vote.
Clark, did you get me as a yes?
Nine in favor, zero opposed to suspend the rule. Marty, would you mind approaching the podium, please?
Good evening, how...
Good evening, how are you?
Could you please move that microphone towards you? Thank you.
Okay. Uh, I just wanna clarify a couple of things. First of all, the Sanitary District is rate-based. We don't receive taxes from any taxing body, whether it be Munster, Hammond. There are minimal taxes we receive, like a gas tax and things like that.
Excuse me, Madam President, but he's waving, 'cause he can't hear you in the back.
Is it good?
Can't hear?
Okay. He's okay now.
It's okay.
Okay. We're good now?
So, I wanted to clarify that, and the other thing is, I'd be remiss, uh, if I didn't come before you, uh, to talk about what it is that the district needs in order to continue to function in the manner that we do, uh, without also letting you know that if and so you do grant the raise to the district, um, it's still the lowest in the state of Indiana. And I just wanted to say that, 'cause I think there were some comments made, that there are other places that are lower. Uh, we researched, uh, a lot of districts across the state, so that the information I passed out to you is true and correct. Uh, and I think it's important that you know, if you grant this rate increase, of where we stand among other districts in our state. Um, and I think it's important that you know that. So, that's why we point that out. Um, I would never come here before you to ask for revenues that would, at the end of the year, have me in a cash balance of excess revenue. Uh, I think that would be wrong. Uh, the revenues that I'm asking for today gets the district flush, uh, to the tune of about four million dollars. Uh, the district, as any other business, and that's the way I look at the district, it's a business. We take in the waste from all of our customer communities, the city of Hammond, and the town of Munster. We process that. Our costs today are more than they were last year, or two years ago. And it's only, you know, our electric costs, the cost for some of the chemicals that we use, our labor costs. So, I have to be able to run the district in a manner that keeps it, one, responsible, and, two, to make sure that every time you flush your toilet, it flushes. And, and that's what this is actually all about. So, what I'm here asking for tonight, as a recap of two weeks ago, an average family of four uses five thousand gallons a month. The city of Hammond bills every two months, that's ten thousand gallons. Currently, for ten thousand gallons, it's twenty-six dollars and seventy-five cents. With the rate increase, that will go from twenty-six seventy-five to thirty-five eighty-nine. It's an increase of six dollars and fifty-seven cents. Um, that's what I'm asking for here tonight, and I'm asking for your help. Uh, the town of Munster, I met with in front of their town council two weeks ago, uh, they passed it on first and second. Um, they understand, just as much as I'm sure all of you here understand, that we're running a business, and currently, our business is short on funds. We do not receive tax money, we're rate-based, and so that's why I'm here tonight, asking for that increase.
Thank you. Any questions of, uh, Mr. Wilkes? Yes, Councilman Higgs.
Uh, I guess my question would be to Marty, uh, in regards to this particular ordinance. The purpose of this, and the reasoning for this happening, is the federal government had mandated this to happen, am I correct?
It's a combination of both. Uh, the real answer to that is that we, since nineteen ninety-three, have been negotiating with the federal government, uh, on limiting the number of times that we dump into the Grand Cayman River. And we have finally reached an agreement, uh, approximately three, four, maybe five months ago now, we reached a consent agreement with the federal government, pretty much spelling out that we will make improvements to the plant over the next eighteen to nineteen years, uh, and major improvements, so that we can eliminate dumping into the Grand Cayman. We originally negotiated for four, it's now almost down to one, time a year, that they will allow us to dump into the Grand Cayman. And if you think about it, um, it makes sense. Because of the fact that not only for us today, but for all of those that come after us in the next twenty, thirty, forty years, we will be looked at as the folks that stopped dumping into the Grand Cayman River with waste and cleaned up the waters that eventually get into Lake Michigan, of which we draw out the drink. Why would we not want to do whatever we can, uh, to fix those problems? And that's what the federal government started saying back in nineteen ninety-three, and that's the agreement that we reached a few months ago. So to answer your question, Councilman, these improvements to the plant, this money, this rate increase, will get us flushed for operation, but also the maintenance that I've had to take away from, all kind of ties in with some of the demands that we'll have to be meeting in the next eighteen to nineteen years. So does some of this money help? Yes, it does. Is it the final amount? As I said two weeks ago, it is not. Uh, I will be back in the next few years, talking about the start of those construction projects that we are now mandated by the federal government, uh, to start doing and must be finished in eighteen years. Uh, otherwise, we'll be penalized heavily. So hopefully that answers your question, Councilman.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
Marty, can you identify some of the projects that have been completed thus far?
We, well, we're getting credit for that thirty-three million gallon basin that we put in on Columbia Avenue right across from the plant. Uh, once again, that's a thirty-three million gallon basin, uh, at a cost that it was originally, when we first came to a couple of years ago, uh, to be able to bond out for, was about a cost of seventy-three million. Uh, it actually came in at forty-three million to build that basin. The basin has been a tremendous asset to the district, no question about it. It's done two major things. It's eliminated a lot of basement flooding and heavy rains. Uh, I do not get those calls anymore. In fact, several weeks ago, when we had that heavy rain, we did not receive any calls of basement backup. That's number one. Number two, it allows us to hold it into the basin. By law, we're required to have it emptied in forty-eight hours, so that we can treat it. So that as the plant's running, trying to get through the rain, we're pumping into the basin to store and hopefully, timing wise, we have enough time, depending on the amount of rain that falls, to be able to keep the plant running at a hundred percent capacity. Which you have to remember, we're rated for forty-three million gallons. That's what we're rated for. We want to take that up to sixty-eight, maybe even seventy-two million. At any given time in a heavy rainstorm, because our rain patterns have changed, our rains used to last all day long in a drizzle. That doesn't happen anymore. We get heavy, heavy amounts of rain and now very centralized parts of the city. We may get, be getting heavy rain in South Hammond and up for Councilman Markovich, but it's nothing. It's just a change of the patterns and our system was not built to handle that. Our system, our catch basins, were all built to accomplish, uh, taking care of these lighter rains. So what we're trying to do is know what the new rainfall that we are, are, are getting and to be able to design the plant as we move forward, to be able to handle these new rain patterns. So to answer your question, uh, some of the money is going to be used in projects. Let me talk about one other project. Uh, the basin, uh, which we, I just talked about, and two new clarifiers that we're putting into the plant as we speak, which will allow us to help treat more, uh, so that we can get it through the process more quickly, handle more volume, um, until it gets into the, back into the Grand Cayman River. But, um, many of you took the tour of the plant a couple of years ago, had a chance to see how it functions and what we do, knowing what comes into the plant at the front end and what we end up putting back in the Grand Cayman. It's truly amazing, uh, in how that process works. I, I see it every day, I never get tired of looking at it and seeing the wildlife that's actually come back to the Grand Cayman. Way different than it was twenty-five, thirty years ago, as we all remember. You wanted nothing to do with the Cayman, the Grand Cayman River, cause it was so polluted. So I think all of these are good things and it's never easy to come here before all of you and ask for more money, but it's just a fact of life. And I know that I need to do it and I do it. Working with a great group of people, uh, who've been, on average, with the plant of twenty-five plus years. They're very dedicated. We got, we run twenty-four seven, we're never off, no holidays. We're, somebody's always at that plant, making sure that it's running. For not only the benefit of the city of Hammond, but also our customer communities, which the mayor talked about a little bit earlier, uh, we've gone, over the last four years, this district has gone through all types of changes. Having a battle between Whiting, Highland and Griffith, that I knew we had to take on because their rates were too low. There's, there's no way that I would be able to come to you to ask for more money or go to the town of Munster, our partner, and ask for more money, when the fact of our customer communities weren't paying their fair share, but they had long-term contracts. So we did what we knew was right and at the end of the day, we end up coming on top. They agreed to pay us more money. It's not the final number that I would have liked, but hey, I'm a realist. I'll take anything more than what you're paying me now, just so that I'm getting more than what you're really contracted for. And we accomplished that. Absolutely amazing. But we didn't do that all by ourselves. We did that with great attorneys in Indianapolis, uh, that worked really hard. And also, believe it or not, with the Department of Justice. They saw what we were faced with and they said, you know what? These customer communities are getting away with murder. We're gonna help you. And they did. And that's why we have those agreements today. They also paid for past capital improvements that were part of their contracts, that they never paid. And so we ended up collecting that money. So I was very proud at the fact of all the hard work, uh, that that process took. But at that same time, as we were dealing with them, we were also dealing with the federal government with this long-term control plan. And how much money can we spend? All of this was happening simultaneously. And, uh, my staff and myself were meeting privately with the customer communities while it was going through the court system, because we wanted to have face-to-face meetings to try to get these things accomplished. And so that they understood why I couldn't agree anymore to the rate that they were paying and why they had to pay more. And so at the end of the day, it all worked and it did what we need to do, which brings me standing here again before you today, and the fact that that's my shortfall. After everything said and done, after we got Whiting, which has not paid anything more than they have under their contract, but they're such a small player, when you look at everybody else, it's not, it's not gonna make any big difference to the district. In principle, it would. It'd be nice if they would pay more, like everybody else, but at the end of the day, it's the big volume people who are sending me the volume, I needed to get the right amount. Highland and Griffith did do that. And I met with both of their town councils, really good people, really dedicated, just like all of you are, to their job and why they are there. They were very gracious after I met with them in front of an open, open body, um, and I'm thankful for that. So this is the last piece of this puzzle for now. But I will be back, there's no doubt about it. They'll be asking for more money for the long-term control plan. It's mandated by the federal government. Unless President Trump pulls some big trick and is able to dissemble it, which I doubt's gonna happen, we're gonna be obligated to do that. So I'm just telling you that now, so that when I'm back here in a couple of years, just say, wait a second, we just gave you a rate increase, what, what are you asking for? It's the long-term control plan, so.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman, uh, Spatelli.
We're, we're, part of the long-term control plan talked about building more basins in the south part of the city, right at the borderline of Hammond and Highland. And after experiencing the operation of the basin we have across from the plant, I'm not a believer in building any more basins. I don't want the city of Hammond to be tagged as a stinky city in the state. They're unsightly, they smell, uh, and they're very costly to operate. The one across the street from the plant makes it easier, cause it's right across the street. I can monitor it, my staff is right there, what we call Headworks, the main building on Columbia Avenue, it's where everything comes into the plant at, that's that location. And it, it can be monitored. There'd be no way that now, I would be convinced, along with my staff, to build another thirty-three million gallon basin in the south of Hammond. Just development goodbye. Who would want to build by a basin? And some of our prime real estate that's still available in the south? Never gonna happen. So I have a meeting with the federal government next week. Uh, Mr. Button and I and my staff will be meeting with the federal government, the town of Highland, uh, to talk about commitments that we made to take more of their value. Uh, they need to send us more, not less, because of the fact that they're dumping into the Cayman River. So under these new agreements and under the agreement with the federal government, uh, we have the ability to treat more, uh, as long as it kind of fits all of these parameters and how much rain comes down and what timeframe and how long is that timeframe? Is it an hour, is it a half hour? All of these variables that we have no control over is what we're dealing. So we have the ability to update the pumps at Headworks, which will help us in the long run, because they do need to be updated now, even if I didn't have to do anything for our customer communities. But our plan that we put together is to eliminate all basins, cause not only was there gonna be one in the south, there was actually gonna be two and a third one on Kennedy Avenue. So the city of Hammond would have three basins. It doesn't make any sense. And so I have to be able to make economical sense of if you're not gonna build the basin, how do you get it to the plant? Well, part of our plan is to put in a new line from the south end of Hammond, all the way directly into the plant. To me, we're putting the numbers together, but to me, it makes sense. I'm not disturbing what we already have. Look at all that work that was done in South Hammond. As the mayor's chief of staff, when we were tearing down the old Kennedy Park apartments, uh, we, we had nothing but heartache, uh, because everybody said, what are you gonna do with that? All that money you're paying? Well, I'm very proud to say, look at it today and look what it's done. And that's happening across the city. Why would I want my name tagged or any of your names tagged for building more basins? So that's, that's the, that's kind of the battle I'm gonna have next week with the federal government, cause I'm gonna have to convince them that I can pump all of this waste from the south end of the city into our plant. And I have some of the best engineers working on that, they agree with me, my staff agrees with me, it can be done. Is it gonna be a little more costly? Of course it is. But you know what? I'd rather see us pay a little bit more now, because of the fact that when you build basins, you, you've got to empty them, you've got to treat it with chlorine, uh, while it sits there, waiting to come to the plant, and they're unsightly. So there goes all economic development, anywhere around it, and they stink. So I, I just don't feel that that's in our best interest. And they're costly to run. The basin across the street from the plant costs us about a million dollars a year to run. We have to clean it, we have to treat it, and remember, that all used to go in the river. Didn't, you know, I didn't have to worry about doing anything, didn't pump it into the river. Well, now we're treating it, it's coming back into the plant. And manpower. It's easier there because of the fact it's right across the street. Anything remote, I'm gonna have to staff it, I'm gonna have to have more employees. Nothing is good about it, in my opinion. And so that's the next thing I'm gonna be coming, and the fact that, have we started on, to answer your initial question, Councilman, about have we done things already on current construction projects we have going? Those, the federal government's counting against that big number, at two fifty to three million, three hundred million, that they want us to spend in the next nineteen years. They're counting that. So I've got a big jump on what we've already spent and getting credit for. But we have all more to do and it, uh, it excites me because the plant was initially started in phases back in the late forties. And thank God, our forefathers had foresight to give me enough land, twenty-three acres there on the one side, on the west side and on the east side. We acquired that about, I think, ten or fifteen years ago and that, that's where we put the basin. So thank God, they had the foresight to allow me to keep adding on, as we were taking more and more waste, so that we can fulfill some of our agreements, not only to the federal government, but also to our customer communities. So this excites me. And it excites me for the fact that we're, what we're doing today will be for the future, uh, twenty, thirty years from now. So that the plant is updated, the pumps that need to be replaced will be in place to allow more capacity, another forced main coming from the south of the city, all the way up to the plant, to bring all that wastewater here, other than storing it remotely. So I will be back and I, I hope that I will have the same support that I've always had from all of you that I've had in the past. And I thank you for the time.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
I guess my last question would be in regards to the gentleman that spoke previously in regards to the increase in the rates. He gave me the impression that people that have town homes or, or rental properties pay less than those who actually own their homes. That's, that's the impression I get from him.
Mr. Toughord, I've got to know over the last many months, both here in Hammond, excuse me, and in the town of Munster. Uh, he happens to live in a condominium. And when we did the commercial rate, uh, a little over a year and a half or so ago, two years, we looked at it very closely and said, you know, multiple units, more than four units, because of the fact that they have one water line that comes into the unit, uh, would be considered commercial. And so when we passed that commercial rate, they were put into that category. After many conversations with the town of Munster and with staff, uh, part of our agreement with the town of Munster was the fact that we would reverse that, we would take them out of the commercial rate category and put them back into the residential rate. Instead of that multi-unit building, which holds ten or fifteen condos, being charged one administrative fee, that each of those units would pay an administrative fee. It's only fair. People living in a unit, just like you're living in your residence. They weren't charged that before. So our agreement with the town of Munster is pretty much a wash. You take the commercial rate away, they were only paying one administrative fee. Now we're changing that commercial rate, taking them back to residential, and now each of those units will pay that administration fee. It's very fair, we believe in it because it's a wash and we have agreed to do that.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Wilkus?
Madam Chairlady.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
So four units go into a residential rate with one administrative fee or four administrative fees?
Actually, each unit will be charged administrative fee, so that they're all equal now. It will be charged a residential rate and an administrative fee, each unit.
So what's the difference between a residential and commercial rate, down each one of those individual condominiums?
I can tell you that, commercial rate is currently three dollars and twenty-eight cents. It'll go to four dollars and ninety-one cents. So basically, the commercial rate, um, jumped up a little over a dollar for the new rate increase.
Any other questions for Mr. Wilkus?
Madam Chairwoman.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
I make a motion and we go back to regular order of business.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman Higgs to return to the regular order of business. Any discussion? Any discussion?
All for the vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so we are on ordinance number seventeen fifteen.
Madam Chairlady.
Yes, Councilman Markovich.
I'd like to make the motion that, uh, we submit seventeen dash fifteen A as an amendment to seventeen dash fifteen. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Spatelli, to, uh, replace seventeen fifteen with seventeen fifteen A, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes. Motion carries, nine in favor, zero opposed. Now for final passage of seventeen fifteen A.
As amended.
Uh, well, A is the amendment, right?
But you're passing seventeen fifteen as amended.
Seventeen fifteen as amended.
Okay, seventeen fifteen as amended. Uh, so do I have a, um, motion to?
Motion for final passage adoption of seventeen dash fifteen as amended.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs for final passage of seventeen fifteen as amended. Clerk Golick, roll call vote please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes. Seventeen fifteen passes, uh, nine in favor, zero opposed.
President Vines, that concludes the ordinances for final passage.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Moving on to resolutions.
No, introduction.
Pardon me?
Introduction of.
Introductions.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, you're correct. Introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance seventeen dash sixteen sponsored by Councilman Warple and Councilman Kalwinski. And ordinance creating a new non-reverting fund, number two-two-two, entitled Bond Monies. Madam Chairwoman.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
Move for first and second reading and place in finance with a committee hearing on June twenty-sixth at five fifty.
on June 26 at 5:15.
Is there a second? Thank you, Councilman Higgs. Motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman Higgs, for first and second reading of 1716, referring to finance with a committee meeting on June 26 at 5:15 PM. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
President Vanez, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Moving on to resolutions.
Item A, resolution 17R-22, sponsored by Councilman Spitali. A resolution of the common council of the city of Hammond, Indiana, approving the issuance of bonds by the Hammond Redevelopment Commission to refund certain outstanding bonds and pay the cost of issuing the bonds.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Spitali.
Final passage of 17R-22.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Emerson, for final passage of 17R-22. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
This particular ordinance refers to the debt in our city, and so get a lower interest rate and pay off the debt early.
Thank you, Councilman Higgs.
Madam President.
Councilman Spitali, do you have anything to add to that, being that you're the sponsor?
Thank you, Councilman Spitali.
Any discussion?
President, I'd like to have Attorney Shanahan please come up.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi.
The resolution for your consideration this evening authorizes the Hammond Redevelopment Commission to issue debt to refinance existing bonds relating to the Potash Project. Because the redevelopment commission is an appointed body, any of their actions relating to debt need to be approved by you. The refunding is being considered to take advantage of lower interest rates for the benefit of the allocation area and everyone who could potentially access that in the future. By lowering the interest rates in the debt service, that'll free up allocation area monies for other projects in the future.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Any questions? Yes, Councilman.
How much money would that save our city in the course of that?
The financial consultant in caucus mentioned around $800,000, with a net present value of $300,000 or $400,000. As a percentage of debt services, around 4.5%. And the standard is to undertake a refunding if you can achieve at least 3% savings.
And you said the consultant?
Yes, Senator and company. Financial advisor.
You know how much he gets paid an hour?
No, I do not.
Any other questions for Attorney Shanahan?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Spitali.
What's the rate at now, and what's it gonna go down to?
I believe the rate's between 4% and 5%, and the new rates are being estimated between 2% and 2.5%.
When's the final payment due on this?
I believe in your resolution, there's a date, and that date is the date that current bonds pay off. The state statute prohibits extending maturities, so that current date is the maximum parameter for the new bonds as well.
I have a date of 2/1/2024, is that sound correct?
That's the last payment of the existing bonds, and so it has to be at the far, we can't go further than that date. So we can go earlier, but we're likely not gonna save enough to pay them off early, but rather lower each payment for each semi-annual payment.
Madam Chairwoman.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilman.
Potash is that big building when you go over the bridge on Indianapolis Boulevard? Okay.
Yeah, okay. I yielded that one.
Any other questions for Attorney Shanahan?
Would you call?
Ready, thank you very much. Any other discussion on 17R-22? Any other discussion?
Off of the vote.
Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. 17R-22 passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
President Vanez, that concludes the reading of the resolutions.
Moving on to new and unfinished business.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
I'd like a letter sent to the superintendent of Parks.
Item A.
Oh, Clerk, we do not need to address that this evening because we already passed the ordinance. Thank you very much. Alrighty, Councilman Higgs, you would like a letter sent to?
Like a letter sent to the superintendent of Parks. In regard, we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago in regards to trying to eliminate the problem with the flooding there at the park, and I was in the process of trying to get someone to find out what needs to be done, but seeing that the new city may possibly buy the property, I don't wanna invest anything in it at this point, so I would like them to cease doing anything in regards to the flooding situation at Harrison Park. I so move.
Okay. There is a motion by Councilman Higgs to have a letter sent to Mark Heinz, superintendent of the Park Department, regarding the flooding at Harrison Park. Is there a second? Alrighty. Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Torres, to have the letter sent. Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam Chairwoman.
Yes, Councilman Markovich.
This Saturday at the pavilion there at Wolf Lake, we're gonna have Sinatra Forever, starting at 6 o'clock. Bring your own food, bring your own drink, bring your blankets, bring your girlfriends, boyfriends, and whatever. Enjoy the night. They have a 20 something piece band, and enjoy yourself. It's only $10. Hopefully, it's gonna be nice and hot and everything, no rain.
Supposed to be a beautiful evening. Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
On this Saturday, I'll be giving my annual three-on-three tournament for the kids in the community throughout the city, and we'll also be giving away bikes. So it'll be a fun-filled day, and hopefully, the kids will come out and enjoy themselves and play some hoops.
That's this Saturday?
Correct.
And what time does it begin?
8:00 AM, and we have, at 12 noon, we will have the Chicago Drill Team performing.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Kelwinski.
I'd like to announce that there will be a community shredding event on Saturday, June 24, from 9:00 AM till noon, sponsored by Dover Chemical Corporation at 3,000 Sheffield Avenue. And Dover invites residents of the Hammond community to this 2017 shredding event to help fight identity theft. Community members are encouraged to bring old tax returns, health records, or other sensitive documents to be securely shredded on site. Voluntary canned good donations will be accepted and donated to the local food pantry, but it's not a requirement. And you can stay and watch your material being shredded if that's what you desire. And again, that's from 9:00 AM till noon on Saturday, June 24, at 3,000 Sheffield Avenue. Also, there will be a meatloaf dinner at the American Legion Post 80 on Thursday, June 15, at 2,003 Indianapolis Boulevard, from 4 to 7 PM. Cost are $10, adults, $5 for children. Dinner includes meatloaf, mashed potatoes, brown gravy, green bean salad, bread and butter, dessert, coffee and milk. And they're asking to come out and support our veterans. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Kelwinski.
Thank you. At the last meeting, the Hammond Common Council, under my motion, requested that the Indiana Department of Environmental Management hold a public hearing on the renewal of the Whiting Metals Air Permit and offer an opportunity for the community to voice an opinion on that permit. They have also asked the Indiana Department of Environment Management to provide us with all the public comments made thus far on the Whiting Metals Air Permit. I want to see that as much information is available on the proposed permit as possible so that residents can form their opinion and decide whether or not they want to speak at or submit comments at the public hearing. I made an unannounced visit to the Whiting Metals Plant a week ago to see what was in the plant and how it was operating. I was taken around the receiving, shipping, melting, raw material storage area along with the baghouse. I saw the lead metal melting area with melting furnaces along with the fume collection hoods that were vented to the outside baghouse. I thought the plant operations would be much bigger due to the size of the buildings. Actually, the metal melting area furnaces were much smaller than I expected. I didn't notice any fumes during my visit, but I was there for a short period of time, and others such as state and environmental inspectors would probably see more than my eyes could see. However, I do want to encourage the public, especially first district residents, to be aware that a public hearing has been requested, and we're waiting for a response. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is now closed. Moving on to public expression. Ms. Slazek, do you want to speak? Okay. Teresa Torres. You will have three minutes, ma'am, if you would state your name and address. Thank you.
Sure. Teresa Torres, and the director of a nonprofit agency at 438 Fayette, and an office in Miraville. You know that a substantial number of Hammond's residents are senior citizens. What you may not know is at least 20%, estimates place about 20% of your citizens as being people with disabilities, and lots of people are on fixed incomes. The city's website says, "Stability is directly tied to livability." For an increasing number of Hammond residents, that means having the ability to access public transportation. Most economists recognize that as being essential to the local development that you're concerned about. A few years ago, a whole lot of people came to this room and begged the city council not to give your transit service away to the regional bus authority. Some of you were here, and some of you did not want to give that bus service away. I'm sorry that Mayor McDermott had to leave, because I would remind him that very recently, he himself acknowledged that supporting the RBA may not have been the best decision. But the bottom line is that a lot of people lost services, which aren't just important to them, but in many cases, they are absolutely essential to their ability to survive. Right now, when the need is even greater than before, unfortunately, Hammond is not supporting public transit at all. We were surprised to learn that you've never supported with financial assistance the township trustees service. Now, although not required to do so, Gary Public Transit, in an effort to help fill the vacuum created by the RBA's demise, expanded their services to include at least parts of Hammond and the surrounding area, with just a little bit of help from the city. We're not talking about a lot of money, not much money at all. They could expand services to include North Hammond as well. Recently, when we asked the mayor why he was not actively supporting public transit, he says that he was. There was supporting money that went to the Regional Development Authority. However, the RDA, while giving $100,000 a year to support public transit in South County, has once again refused to provide any support at all that would benefit the residents of Hammond and the surrounding communities. It's important to note that any money that goes to support public transit would be leveraged to bring in even larger amounts of federal dollars. Now, Gary Public Transit and the North Township Dalarite are working collaboratively together, but they need your support. Without it, even the services they are providing now are in jeopardy. Those services are about to be reduced. So we urge you, this is an opportunity to go back and revisit some maybe decisions that we might not have made, should not have made. We want you to recognize the critical role of an accessible, affordable, and reliable public transit system, and to find a way to provide financial support to this essential service. Talk about bang for your buck. We're not talking about a lot of money. And again, this great deal of collaboration going on, all it needs, really, is for one of you to recognize the need and champion this cause, and we stand ready to assist you in that endeavor. We want to work with you. We didn't like coming in here and fussing with you all before.
I applaud you.
Thank you, Ms. Torres. Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Renee Jackson.
That's all right. Shortly, they got a big mouth. I am here to appeal to you guys' conscience for the access to life, okay? We get multiple calls at the center for every day about our clients, about their dilemma, about transit in this area, transit and paratransit. So as Ms. Torres mentioned, without the funding, we have the possibility of losing the routes that are already, that are in place. You know, you see this chair, you figure, she's going to the doctor. But I don't only go to the doctor. I go to the mall, I go to the hair salon, I go to the bar. In other words, I access life. People in chairs live life. And without the need, without our dependence on transit, we lose part of that life. We can't access, you know, our daily life. One of the council members mentioned public economic development. So without my access to transportation, you lose my financial contribution, and therefore, I can't contribute to economic development if I can't get there and spend my money. So again, please, please, I'm urging you to support public transportation. We need your votes on this.
Yes.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jim Tufford.
He spoke earlier.
The next speaker is Maria Brusen, Bryson.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Good evening, council members. My address is 6123 Garfield, and I have great concerns about four-wheel dirt bikes and racing cars up and down the residential street. As I know, you know, people enjoy themselves, they want to have fun, but I think that it's getting out of hand, because they're riding up and down the streets, on the sidewalks with the dirt bikes. They're racing down the sidewalk, down the streets, and you're seeing tire marks, which let you know that they're driving too fast. You have children, you have elderly people on our block, people that are ill. So I'm urging you to please, if there isn't an ordinance in effect, that this will be looked at seriously, because we do deserve, or I do, and so do the other residents, deserve a quality of living where it is at some time peaceful.
Thank you.
So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Councilman Higgs, did you get that address?
Oh, I certainly, Councilman Vanez, I have spoken with my constituent on several occasions, also sent a letter to the police department in regards to that.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
I'm on top of it.
Yes, you are.
We're all just getting along today.
Laurel Kilpatrick.
Got the new pills out.
This is a happy place.
Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Laurel Kilpatrick, and I'm the programs coordinator at Everybody Counts North. And I just wanted to speak again to a couple of the concerns of the population that we deal with here in Hammond. From the first fair housing forum or open meeting that we went to, the two concerns that went hand in hand with each other was the accessibility or the ability for people to access housing that was easy for them to maneuver around in terms of disabilities, for it to be accessible, and accessing transportation. Since we were new as a center at Everybody Counts North to the Hammond area, not new to Lake County, definitely. Since we were new as a center at Everybody Counts North to the Hammond area, uh, not new to Lake County definitely, uh, with, uh, twenty-five, thirty-plus years in East Chicago, but newly here in Hammond. And that has been the majority of the calls that we've dealt with is accessible housing and accessible transportation. And there's been some beautiful improvements made in Hammond in terms of making it a walkable community, but a walkable community is definitely not the same as an accessible community when you talk about people who do not have the ability to walk, uh, as their main transportation. For people who use chairs, for people who use crutches, things like that. So just to comment on the majority of the calls that we get and the majority of the concerns of the people that we service about Hammond. And I wanted to, again, encourage this body to really take a look at the accessibility of the community. I was so happy when I pulled up and saw that the word handicap had been taken off of the two signs, uh, by the accessible insurance. I, and I checked the second sign. I saw it off the first sign and thought that maybe it was vandalized until I checked the second sign and said, okay, that was purposeful. That's great. Because what really handicaps people with disabilities is when their communities are not accessible to them. That's what stops them from being able to live a productive life, from being able to live a happy social life and being able to contribute economically to their community. So again, just repeating the, the message that it is so very important to pay attention to the legal standards of the Americans with Disability Act in terms of accessible housing, accessible public spaces. One thing that we keep running into is the business owners seem to be under the impression that they can be grandfathered around following the law of the ADA. That's not a thing. That doesn't exist unless you're, uh, a historic building and then there's regulations to that. So we're even available at Everybody Counts North to do some education in terms of what that means. What, what are some, what are some of the laws that business owners have to follow in terms of accessibility? Because if you don't know, you don't know. There's no great evil in it. If that's not your lived experience, that's something that you don't know. But transportation falls hand in hand with those accessible housing options. People have to be able to get where they need to go to live their lives. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, next is Ron Sims. Thank you. Uh, George Stoya?
George Stoya, Robertsdale. I'm going back to the bees because I don't think it's been fully explored. I know that you guys had to do it probably, maybe necessarily. I don't think it's good legislation, but I, I, and I say that because that two-hundred-foot limit was, was nice. That would have been, that would have been to me the better, the more rational. But here we are in an urban environment and I know that I, like everybody else, you have a fundamental right to quiet enjoyment of your property, of your residence. And this, under the color of law, allows these people to bring bees in. Nobody can control a bee. You can sit there and say, but, oh, they're benign, this and that. When they start foraging, when they start getting hungry, they're, and they, and they get out of control, there's nothing, you can't say heal, boy, 'cause they like, they aren't gonna heal. So, um, I just think there's a lot of risks that, uh, I, I, and I, that haven't been really addressed and the risks of, you know, I mean, this can be, uh, I think there's a, a possible Fifth Amendment invasion here. Uh, in, in the sense that your right to quiet enjoyment is a property right. And you don't have to be subjected to the risk. Think about it, you're, you're sitting there, you're in an urban environment, you have barbecues on Saturdays, suddenly, whoa, I got bee hives next door. Whoopie do, thank you. You know, there's a risk factor. And I don't, I've never heard of a bee whisperer, so, uh, I don't know how they're gonna control these things i, in the event something goes wrong, 'cause somebody's gonna get stung, somebody's gonna get hurt. It ain't gonna be one bee. All this little rhetoric, this little joke that, oh, find out whose bee it is. Oh, no, they, they work in packs. And, um, I just think it's overly risky. I, I, I stand with some of the councilmen, uh, I just wanted to raise it 'cause I just think that, uh, you know, I don't wanna get overly technical with inverse condemnation or takings of my quiet, uh, my right to quiet enjoyment, but it's there. And somebody may get angry enough, may get frustrated enough, and suddenly we've been invaded by the beekeepers. And you can say, well, everybody's doing it. Well, a lot of people are growing their own pot too. You guys wanna pass an ordinance on that? It's against the law. So, you know, I think it's bad legislation. I know you had to do it. It's better than being unregulated, I guess, but I think it was all too easily ushered in. I mean, where are these people from? We've never heard of these people. Some of these people that have come up here, like you got some, a couple of the councilmen told me, hey, they wanted carte blanche. And it's like, well, boo hoo. You want carte blanche? And it's like, just, you know, calling it a hobby does not make it any less risky. You know, it just doesn't. Anyway, that's all. Who let the bee?
Uh, next speaker is Alvin Cheeks. Okay. Public expression is now closed. Motion to adjourn?
I so move or make a motion that we adjourn from this meeting, Council President.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by, who's the second? Second by Councilman Spitali, uh, that we adjourn the meeting. All those in favor? Opposed? Have a good eve-